Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Seaside City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 4, 2018. Will call, please.
Councilmember Jones? Here. Councilmember Pacheco?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Alexander? Mayor Rubio?
Here. And for the record, Eric Proton Alexander is in North and South Carolina, working with the Red Cross, U.B.D., Lloyd. Okay. Yeah. He is awesome. Okay, the next item on the agenda is invocations to be led by Pastor Britt from Great Division Temple. And pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Campbell, please.
Shall we pray, Father in Jesus' name, we thank you for your goodness and love and kindness and tender mercy. Thank you, God, for allowing us to be in another city council meeting. You said, "All that we is acknowledge you, you shall direct our path." So we acknowledge you tonight, God, as turbants in our city. But, God, you are able, you can speak peace. Pray that you bless this council tonight, bless this meeting, bless our mayor, bless our police chief, and all the police officers, our fire chief and the firemen. Bless this citizen of this city. And we'll give it back to him, praise in thy Son, Jesus of Christ's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay. Are there any items that are worth after the survey to our post in the line?
No.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of the City of Seaside, but not on this agenda, may do so during a public commentary period for up to three minutes. Any comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public right here, please state your name.
My name is Udis Ebenike. I reside in Seaside Highlands. I was here in November last year, nine months ago, with a petition to the city council to look into the traffic situation of not to be looked. Another I.O.R.A. has happened yesterday at the aquarium. I drove in there, the traffic was packed up all the way to Coliseum. So, my question is, if you don't want to do anything for cure your constituents, let me know, and then I will go to the next higher authority, because I'm fed up.
Good evening, Mayor, and the city council members. My name is Beverly Bean. I'm a retired veterinarian. I owned a small animal practice in Monterey for over twenty years. I'm also a longtime board member with the League of Women Voters of Monterey County. I want to share with you the reasons that I and the League support Public Water Now and Measure J in the November election. The flood of mailers and media advertising from Cal-Am is not accurate, to say the least. The League's support for Measure J is based on our position that water is a necessary resource for human life, and that it is a public resource, not a commodity. Cal-Am, a private corporation, has focused on maximizing its profits and providing the highest return to its shareholders. It has no incentive to control costs for ratepayers. The League supports fair and responsible rates and transparent decision-making. Currently, rates are set by the California Public Utilities Commission, an appointed body. Ratepayers have limited access to the hearings, which are held in San Francisco, and the recommendations of the Office of Ratepayers Advocates intended to protect ratepayers are frequently ignored. The result is that Cal-Am's rates are among the highest in the country. Costs for ratepayers have increased sixty-eight percent in the last two years, with more increases scheduled. After widely promoting conservation, Cal-Am charged us sixty-four million dollars for unused water to make up for their lost revenue. The League believes Cal-Am has not been a responsible steward of the water supply. Cal-Am was ordered to stop overdrafting the Carmel River in nineteen ninety-five. In the twenty-three years since then, Cal-Am has implemented no new water supply projects. But with the PUC approval, it has charged ratepayers thirty-four million dollars for three failed water projects. Meanwhile, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has been responsible for developing over seven thousand acre-feet of new water over the past twenty-five years. Measure J requires the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District to conduct a feasibility study to get the facts on a public buyout. Facts would be presented to the district board, where the final decision will be made in an open and transparent process. If the facts show that a public buyout is financially feasible and in the public interest, the district would proceed under eminent domain to buy Cal-Am's local system. The price would be set by the court, not by Cal-Am. The purchase of Cal-Am would be paid for by a thirty-year low-interest bond, which would be paid back on our water bills. This cost would be offset by the nineteen million annually that Cal-Am now takes out of our community in corporate profits and corporate taxes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please vote yes on Measure J.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Lashley Wayne Mitchell. I go by the nickname of Philly. I was homeless in Seaside for sixteen years, but in spite of that, this is my home. I'm the chaplain of the Disabled American Veterans Monterey Chapter eighty-five. I'm a long lifetime member, volunteer for the VFW, and I'm also an alumni at West Point, United States Military Academy, and I'm also alumni at the BTC. I'd like to bring a proposal to the city council. My proposal is prohibiting discharging of children from the side of the driver's side of the street. My daughter goes to Delray Woods, and I've talked to a couple of officers. I'd like to acknowledge Officer Suzillo, and I'd also like to acknowledge Officer Hernandez, which I've talked to one-on-one about the situation. I live in Everhambur and Broughton, and Amador, and people drive up my city, up the streets, like Ninety-four North, and I think that we should have undercover cops riding around the city, because there's a lot of people breaking the law. Don't get me wrong, I was a convicted felon at one time, but I changed my life around by the grace of God. But, uh, my daughter, I'm concerned about my daughter. I have an eight-year-old daughter. Now, let me take up the situation about Seaside High. When I was going to high school, we had N.T.A.s. They were non-teachers assistants. They were security. They were ex-military and police like myself, and I think that that needs to be taken place and taken consideration for the City of Seaside. I was born and raised in Philadelphia. Seaside is my home. Thank you so much for letting me get this opportunity to address the council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff, and the public. My name is Mel Mason, and I'm the co-founder, executive director, and clinical director of The Village Project Incorporated, located here in Seaside. I'm pretty upset, so I'm trying to stay calm, because The Village Project has disingenuously, spuriously, and as a result of lies and fabrication, has been injected into the political arena of this election. And I'm really, really upset about that, because it has no business being placed in there. Nobody has any business mentioning a five-oh-one, six-three nonprofit that does the work that we do in the community into this election. The rumor that's been going around, and I'm going to give Councilmember Jones credit for not being the one that's being quoted, but there are other people that are being quoted, as saying that we were not welcoming to Councilmember Jones. That she wasn't invited to anything, that she hasn't been recognized for the position and title that she has. With regard to The Village Project, and I think Councilwoman Jones can attest to the fact that we spent over an hour and a half right after she was first elected at The Village Project, at my office, and we talked about everything that The Village Project does. And one of her final statements was that she was, uh, she considered black mental health as being one of her priorities, and it really made me feel good. After that meeting, I took her and introduced her to the staff in the office, and I introduced her as newly-elected Councilwoman Jones. That was one. We had other events, but the one that I really wanted her to attend was the one that Councilmember Pacheco's attended a number of our events, and Mayor Proton Dennis Alexander, who came in your stead, because you had called to say that you couldn't make it. That was our tenth anniversary celebration. We had elected officials from all over the place. I think I ran into Councilmember Jones later, some other time later, and I think she said that she had to be out of town, which, of course, was understandable, but would really have liked to have seen her there with all the other elected officials as well. And then, this past summer, after-school summer program, Councilmember Jones was invited and came and spoke to the children. Children were real excited that they had a city councilperson come and speak to them during the summer. So that's, you know, those are just some examples of the fact that when people say that we were not invited, that we were not welcoming, that they are lying. They are absolutely lying. You know, and I would suggest to people that if you have something to say about The Village Project, or if you have something, some kind of concern about The Village Project, that you come and talk to me. You talk to me. You don't go around talking to other people and all this. I know I'm running out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
But I'm pretty, it starts with a P. And, uh, because if somebody's going to make statements about The Village Project, nobody knows The Village Project better than me, and they need to come and talk to me before they do something. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and City Attorney. I stand to, uh, thank you. I stand to thank the Peninsula Cold Case Project, the Monterey Peninsula Regional Violence and Technical Narcotics Team, and the Seaside Police Department for bringing charges in the four-year-old murder case of Mr. Caleb Kennedy. A father of three who was fairly shot in Seaside. Kennedy, a thirty-five-year-old man, was a resident of Seaside who grew up here, played football for Seaside High. He was shot and killed, uh, April sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, while he was walking to his car near his house. The police said that Kennedy was not known to be involved with gangs, which was the same as the three other cold cases that they're working on. Monterey Police Commander Ethan Andrews said, "I believe, based on what I knew about these victims, it could be a case of mistaken identity, the wrong person, in the wrong place at the wrong time." I believe that to be true. I just stand here to thank the police department, the Cold Case Human Project, Violence and Narcotics Team, and the Seaside Police Department for making our community safer, giving some type of closure to the family, and justice for Mr. Kennedy. I just want to thank that group that you guys are holding together for what they have done for us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Daryl Short takes a long time, fifty-six years, Seaside City Council. First of all, I want to give credit to my fire department. They look good in that pink, you know. As I always say, our police department and fire department is the best out of this world, and I defend it. And Mr. Uh, darn, Mr. Mason, whoever say that about your group, tell them to come see me too, because I know what you did in this city. We ain't had the problems we used to have since your organization and the training you supplied with Teddy and all that, and we can see that. These young people are starting to listen. So I'm, if anybody say that, tell them to come see me. I'll tell them what it is. I got the good history in this city. But I came down there for a reason, and the reason is, Ms. Jones, it is what it is. It's on record, and I'm not happy. Sixteen years I served up there, one thing I don't do is mislead anyone, mislead this community. I raised two kids when my wife died, right from that bench. Anyone that came in here watched my kids, five and six years old. I don't think the city should be paying for your kid, and I hope you guys will remove that from the budget. The budget is six thousand dollars for all of you. She had spent fifteen thousand dollars by herself. When do you realize there's a lot of corruption going on here? I've got every document that's been going on, and now I'm starting to see we're now in the twenties and thirties, thousands. You cannot give a young person a credit card and think it's a candy store. It's just sad to me. I'm a taxpayer, high taxpayer in this city, and I'm really upset about it. Ms. Jones, give the credit card back. Nobody else has it.
This is restricted, council.
Yes, please. Well, remember, everybody's at a little up there. But, um, give the credit card back. You know, I've served sixteen years. Nobody had a credit card. I don't care what anybody say. There's no way somebody should have a credit card. The city manager's office is responsible to make your flights and everything, because that's how you follow the policy. It's through him and through the finance director. I'm very upset how the finance director, "We don't have one. I heard you hired one today," but the city manager's writing these, "Pay the bill, pay the bill." I am waiting on this audit. Mr. Freeman says you're over it. Anything that does not have a receipt shall not be paid by this city. We have streets at Level F that are just totally, it's embarrassing, right down the street with cracks as wide as an earth. We need to get this right. I'm sorry, but, Ms. Jones, I really don't think you concerned the citizens. You've really abused the citizens' rights. I really think you should resign. And anyone that's saying you should resign or recall, I will be backing them, because I don't think anyone, you are up there for the rights to help these citizens and to be responsible to the citizens here. This is not a paid job.
Thank you.
Maybe that wasn't nice. That was totally awful, right? Start tricky.
No way!
You did too. First start.
Good evening.
Are you serious?
Yep.
First start's bad.
Yep.
You witness it? Yes, I did. You witness it?
Ask him if he comes out to you.
My old days, I went here from hell, right that way.
Is he coming out too?
Good evening. I didn't know I was exciting to come on your city council. George Riley, I'm a candidate for the Division Two seat on the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. Division Two covers Nocie Bueno, toward Santa City. It includes all of Santa City and Delray Oaks, and part of Monterey over to the Bush Graduate School. So I'm a candidate. I just wanted to introduce myself to you and give just a very quick summary. I am the leader of the Measure J campaign for public ownership. If I'm elected, I would expect to rigorously pursue a valid, comprehensive, and thorough feasibility study. The reason it's important to do honest, deep research on that is that whatever the decision is going forward will be a huge decision for this community, and the Water Management District is going to have to stand behind it. And if there's a shortcut to a feasibility study, that's not what anybody should be interested in. They ought to be interested in an absolutely thorough, deep evaluation of the options and the possibilities going forward. The other thing I want to say is that I do think that I will be, I mean, I plan on being an advocate for the Seaside Muni water system. I know there's some struggles around that, but I think there ought to be more of a partnership across to solving the water problem and not just relying on Cal-Am, or even not just relying on a single agency. And I think the Water Management District and the Pure Water Monterey Project have shown that partnerships work, and I would like to include the Seaside Muni in the discussion of those kind of partnerships, because I think in the long run, that is going to be the answer to our water supply and some kind of regional approach to D-SAL, or in general, water supply, is the, is the name of the game for the future. And the last little point I want to make is that I think there's election integrity issue that concerns part of your population. The Seaside population is considered the organ community. Right now, they get their water from Marina Coast, but they're in the Water Management District boundaries. So they vote for the Monterey Peninsula District, but they get their water from somewhere else, and that's just not representation, proper representation. So I'm just hoping that the annexation of that population into the Marina Coast water district can proceed, and that then it's one person, one vote, that's a valid relationship between where you get your water and the, and the agency that provides it. And they have electoral rights, and it ought to apply in that community as well. So anyway, I'm just giving you a little bit about where my agenda hopes to be, and I will be a candidate, and I hope to see more of you sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Jimmy Welch. Jimmy Welch. That's my name. I'm here on behalf, I'm on this committee. It's called Seaside Thrives. And I'm a resident up in Del Monte Manor. It's been known for a lot of things, a lot of things, a lot of things, good and bad, more, you know, like bad, the lately good. So Seaside Thrives is a committee that came together of residents, and we partnered up with Seaside Police, Seaside Fire, and seeing Dennis come in, Dr. Rucker, there's various others that have made contributions up to five thousand dollars to our playground committee. So the residents, along with others, have raised almost a hundred thousand dollars to replace what's donated from the old Continental Park Playground Committee behind the old little house that used to be the Boys and Girls Club, and they gave it to the Del Monte Manor property. So we decided to remove what was once given to us, a bunch of old iron pipes and metal. And so we're, right now, having the new playground installed. So we would like to thank the city also, who's been helping. We like to thank publicly the firemen, the first responders. When they delivered it, they just threw it in the field. Just throw it to them up in the projects. We called the fire department. We called the city workers, and they stopped what they were doing to come and help us out. We appreciate that. We say thank you for that. We also like to thank the city league, the owners of the property. We also like to thank just many of you. That's why I'm here. So, Dr. Rucker asked us, when we mentioned it last time, when, or when is our grand opening? So we're looking at the first week in November. So we'd like to invite you all, you all who's running for office. We'd like to invite everyone present today. We plan to have a great celebration. We're proud of what we did, and we look forward to the things that we're going to do that are even greater. Now, I like to call it Del Monte Manor. Some folks call it the PJs. Some folks call it the projects. But there's people that live there that vote and work. Part of it's subsidized. I make a little bit of money, a little bit, so I'm a market renter. So y'all come and join us the first week in November, and let's celebrate, because we plan on doing even greater things. Thank you. Thank you.
Alvin Edwards running for the water board, and I'm not running against George Riley. George Riley is a good guy. One of the good ones. George Riley, um, likes that Measure J. I'm here to ask the residents of Seaside Highlands, our Monah Home Park, and, and, and the other place over there. I forgot his name. What, what is it? Sun Bay. I was over there today and forgot his name. But I ask those people in Sun Bay for your support, all y'all over there, your support, for your support for Measure J, and for me, because I rode around and I stumbled through there, all y'all in my voting district. I know you want representation. I know Marina Coast is... I know, uh, Marina Coast is going to Latico with the city and the district. We might can get you all some representation on that board, and now is the best time to do it, because Ford is leaving, and when Ford leave, you need representation out there. The district, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, was in the same shape back when Mayor Claire was here, and he fought to get us some seats on that board, and we on that board today. We are on that board today. I want us to get on Marina Coast board, because we should be represented in any board that we do in, in, in this state or in this county. We should have representation, and that was something that we fought for. And this Rucker and all the rest of mine, you start mentioning names, because I miss somebody, they gonna catch me at the polls. So I, I don't miss nobody. But we need your support out there, it's on the ballot. Measure J and Alvin Edwards is on that ballot. Vote yes, vote yes. I'm the guy out there with that little sign you wanna see, so please vote yes. Also, in the Coast Weekly today, get a copy of it, it talked about Measure J. It gave you the facts, that was another independent study. So also read your ballot, read your ballot good, just don't vote on that big sign, alright? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Peter Kaiser. Um, just some things to consider. We'd like to invite you to the Forty Days for Life that we're celebrating, praying in front of the Planned Parenthood Abortion Clinic two blocks from here. It began last week, and on Wednesday and Thursday night, at seven o'clock, we have a candlelight prayer and singing and praying vigil. It's going on right now, there were twenty people there last week. I encourage you to come during the week. They have the abortions there on Friday morning, about eight till noon. And we want to, uh, not have Seaside be known as the major abortion, uh, facility in Monterey County, and most of the surgical abortions are done right here, two blocks away. So please pray for these unborn babies, that they would be surviving and not going in there and losing their lives. Thank you for that. And also, um, as you're going to be getting your absentee ballots, your sample ballots next week, please pray and seek Bible's guidance and constitutionally vote, uh, in that ballot, please be very careful. Um, please consider being pro-life, protect the innocent unborn and also the elderly. Um, be, uh, support traditional marriage, marriage between a man and a woman, and also please support the Second Amendment. That's why we have a free country right now, we're no longer British citizens. And, um, ask what Jesus would do in this situation, please. Also on Measure J, you have to be very careful. There's two parts to it. One part is they're going to study and evaluate, uh, what the cost would be to buy it out. There's one estimate by, uh, by CalAAM, it's a billion dollars, there's others maybe for less. And then the second part is that if they think it's feasible in their mind, then they say they're going to go ahead and buy it. Now, there's no second choice for us. In other words, I think it should have been written with two different, uh, proposals. One, to evaluate it, and the second vote after they say it's going to cost forty or fifty thousand dollars per ratepayer, then we need to choose, see if we want to pay that and buy it. But it's not, it's all in one package, so you may want to say initially, we don't want them put together. We want to know what it will cost if it's fifty thousand per family, and then we want to know later on if we want to do that. But it's all in one, so you might want to say, let's rewrite that, let's do it another way next time. Do a study, and then tell us later if we want to pay that fifty thousand dollars or whatever it's going to be. And, uh, bless you on your voting.
Thank you, Helen Rucker. I think all of you know that I have a passion for voting. I have a passion for registering to vote. And I would like to invite all of you to come out to sixteen seventy-six Fremont Boulevard. In the back, I'm throwing a party. And the party is to tell everybody you don't have a right not to vote. And I have taken money out of my pocket, and I rented a tent, I have hired a disc jockey, I have bought wieners and hot dog bars, and, well, we're gonna have a party. I'm even gonna have a popcorn machine, I don't know how, how it's gonna work with. We're gonna have a party out there. We want everybody to be aware that we want you to register. This will be an opportunity for anybody who's not registered or think they're not registered to come by, and we want you to vote. I have a second issue that I wanted to talk about, that is that I heard a rumor that there are people who do not want us to proceed with, uh, the renovation of the park, uh, Cattino Park. I have sat here at many city council meetings, listening to how hard the staff and the council has worked on trying to get the money necessary to, to renovate that park. And I'm here to say that people who haven't been here, haven't sat here with Ruthie and I, listened to all of the discussion that has gone on, that you gotta know what you're talking about before you get up here and talk. So please, this is, is a good project, the city deserves it, the children deserve it. So please, keep your mouth shut if you don't know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Dan Fernandez, I'm a faculty member at CSUNB. I guess I have the honor of going after, um, you, which is a tough, you, uh, tough duty to fill there, so. Um, I wanted to say that I'm here with my class of students, and we are working on a program with the city, a partnership. And I come up here every two weeks, so some of you are going to get to know me this semester. But I bring my entire class with me, and this class is doing work with the city of Seaside. And maybe you can raise your hands if you're in my class, twenty-two students. They're learning how city government works, so this is a great educational experience for them. And they're getting to participate on some outstanding projects that the city wants to have to make the city better. And some of them include, uh, compost pickup, they're trying to, to try to help reduce the waste stream that the city generates. Uh, they're looking at the possibility of a lineal park, as a matter of fact, there may be a survey, either at this meeting or a subsequent meeting that they'll ask folks who are in the city council, um, attendees to fill out if they're interested in providing input on the park, so that, uh, information is taken from the residents for making the best part possible. Also creating possibility of growing trees in the area, both fruit trees and other trees, for residents that the city would, would support in terms of, this is a good tree, because it gets native, it grows well in this area. So it'd be an informational pamphlet that the students are looking at putting out. And also trying to help make Fremont Street even better, kind of like what you did on Broadway, providing input on what might be the things that would make, uh, a better community for the folks along there. So we look forward to working with you for the remainder of this semester, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
I'm really excited by the connection with Mr. Fernandez and CSUNB, and this is the second year that they've been working with us. I also want to second what Helen Rucker said. I really appreciate all the work you're doing on getting people to vote. I saw you and Mrs. Watts out in front of Safeway, collecting signatures, uh, getting people registered. And, um, also I want to say that I think this is a really important time for our, uh, Water Management District. We have two districts in Seaside, so we have two candidates. You'll either be able to vote for George Riley, or you'll be able to vote for Alvin Edwards. And this is an incredible opportunity, uh, to vote for Alvin Edwards. He's spent more than a dozen years on that board already. He's really knowledgeable about water and experienced, uh, when he was on the board, um, the things that he said, the things that he knew. And I think we need really smart people on that board that are aware of water, so, um, our city, we have many things to vote on, but I think that our opportunities are very, um, we're very fortunate to have those two people to vote for for Water District. Um, yeah, and, and as far as Measure J goes, um, this is our only chance to have public water. There was an initiative four years ago, it did not pass, it came close. Ever since that happened, people have been working to keep alive the idea of public water. Across the United States, there are more than seventy-five, more than seventy-five percent of the water companies are publicly owned. I believe the number's actually eighty-five percent. Publicly owned because it's a public resource. And once it becomes privately owned and you have shareholders, you have no control at all. If you don't like what the Water Management District is doing, every four years, we can vote. We can vote out the people we don't want and get somebody else in, so that we have a much stronger voice. So, um, if you, and all are considering public water, this is the opportunity to vote for it. And if you, I mean, if they won't do anything until a feasibility study is done and it's determined that this is a, a good way to go. Um, so please check out the, uh, website for Public Water Now, and, and please consider voting for those of us. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maryetta Aranda, and good evening, good evening to you, Mayor, and council members, as well as the city, city manager and city attorney. I have been a Seaside resident for over thirty years and a taxpayer. I have been working as an accountant over twenty-six years. Download some records, review them. Thank goodness to our city clerk, she was able to provide me with additional in, information. I am here because I am requesting that the city calls for a forensic audit of a council member, Kayla Jones, her expenses during her term to determine if fraud and misuse of taxpayers' money had occurred. Based on the city's expense and use public resource policy statement Kayla Jones voted on, which, uh, modified the care expenses, uh, family care expenses on June, uh, July twentieth, twenty-seventh, and she also signed the purchasing card holder use agreement on May, March first, twenty eighteen. After reviewing all these documents, I came through with many non-compliance. And that is a non-compliance with the city expense unauthorized out of state travel, no prior authorization for travel, no expense reports submitted at completion of the travel, missing receipt, supporting documents for the expenses paid by the city. The use of the purchasing card which she signed, there were not, there were no prior approvals. The use of the, uh, purchasing card again in, uh, the Disneyland Anaheim Resort also did not have all the documentation. All these must be audited. And again, I'm also a taxpayer. I'm requesting the, the, um, the city attorney conducts the request, conducts the independent, uh, audit from that outside firm, and hopefully that will be provided to us, to the general public, and whom it will be, uh, updone, and which firm will be, uh, holding these, uh, toilet.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
I'm asking the city council member, Dr. Kayla Jones, to resign. And I have some of the, uh, compilation of the reports that I have audited, uh, the, the public records, and I'd like this to include for public.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Racy Rubio, I'm a Seaside resident and taxpayer. Within the public records request made by the Monterey County Weekly, I located reports of annual travel expense recaps for the past three fiscal years for all city council and elected officials. I deducted what appeared to be accounting errors for non-travel items such as office supplies, business cards, and city-sponsored events from each councilperson's report. All councilmembers with the exception of Councilmember Jones had their travel arrangements made by the city council secretary. No councilperson with the exception of Councilmember Jones has a city purchasing card. All councilmembers traveled with the exception of Councilmember Jones was within the state of California. Note, the mayor attended a national securities conference in Harrisburg, Virginia in fiscal year fifteen sixty as a part of FORA, and FORA did reimburse the city for his travel expenses. The annual budget for Mayor Rubio is three thousand dollars. In all fiscal years, he was within the budget. Councilmember Alexander has a budget of fifteen hundred dollars, he was within his budget all three years. Mr. Pacheco is the most frugal of all. His highest amount of travel in one fiscal year was four hundred and twenty dollars, and he has a fifteen hundred dollar travel allowance. Councilmember Campbell, equally frugal. Councilmember Jones, in fiscal year sixteen seventeen, overran the budget by eight hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. She has a fifteen hundred dollar allowance as well. Last fiscal year seventeen eighteen, the total was ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars in travel expenses. That's over nine thousand dollars over the budget. Why? Why? What is the justification for exceeding her travel budget by over nine thousand dollars in one fiscal year? As a taxpayer, this is astounding. And to make matters worse, instead of questioning the validity of all these charges and putting a halter over spending in the current eighteen nineteen budget, her travel is increased by six thousand five hundred dollars to eight thousand dollars, hers and hers only. The rest of you remain the same. Why? What is the justification for that? Why is Councilmember Jones not held to the same budget standards as the rest of you? As a Seaside taxpayer, I find this completely unacceptable and request, one, a forensic audit of all her expenses; two, that the current budget be amended immediately to adjust her annual travel budget back to fifteen hundred, which is consistent with the rest of you; three, that her purchasing card be returned immediately and her cardholder account canceled; and four, that no councilmember be allowed to use any other city employee's purchasing card for any travel-related expenses without the city manager's prior approval written and according to the city's expense and use policy, which was unanimously voted and approved in July twenty seventeen. We should be able to trust that the city manager, the finance department, and our elected officials are acting responsibly and with accountability with our public funds. Our trust has been broken. As a side note, I am happy to learn that Kimberly Drothner has now joined the finance committee. I know her from the county, she's exceptional, and I trust that she will right this ship.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Rubio. My name is Anne Ray McGum, fifty-eight-year resident of Seaside on the same square block. I too, I'm very upset. Unfortunately, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jones was not here at the last meeting, but I know she saw the meeting, and I know her husband texted her our names and who was against her and who was for her. Are there any candidates for city council or the mayoral seat that have been fined for late or not filing campaign forms? And if so, who are they and are the fines ongoing? The voters deserve clear answers from the city election official. Councilmember Jones, you received a memo dated September twenty-fourth, dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen from the city clerk election official concerning your campaign forms four sixty. It states in part regarding the due dates and/or status of your FPPC Form four sixty and that your statements were due or past due. And both will continue to incur ten dollars per day fine until the forms have been filed, per state law. The fine is now close to over three thousand dollars and counting. My clear question is, have you been fined? Not have, not have you paid it or not paid it? But is the city clerk election official commenting wrong? A clear yes or no answer would be helpful. Councilmember Jones, you have said you created a childcare program for working families that can use it. Where can we read the policy and/or program guidelines for usage? And if so, and if you have used over six thousand dollars or of the three thousand dollar budgeted fund for yourself, what is left for the public? Councilmember Jones, do you support and will you vote for an eight thousand dollar travel budget for all council members like you have now? A clear yes or no vote would be helpful. You turned in four hundred and ninety-dollar money order and told the city, if they, not you, find anything unauthorized, take it from there. You must have believed something, some things were unauthorized. Councilmember Jones, as candidate for mayor, where is your leadership for fixing what is wrong? Because that is your job as the mayor, correct wrongdoing.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Lisa Mitchell, longtime resident of Seaside. The one thing about elections, when we get to election time, members of the diocese, elections will destroy a relationship. But it's all business for the betterment of the community. We still have a moral responsibility to treat each other with dignity and respect. There's no like shade, personal shade against a person. It's the character and the act in which you're committing against the rest of us taxpayers. Because I'm working for money, you haven't started working for me yet. So everything matters to me. I'm invested in Seaside. But this is what I'm standing up here for tonight. So we were here on the twentieth. I don't do Facebook. I don't do none of that stuff, but I didn't appreciate this. So on the twenty-first, I got this tag from like maybe fifteen or twenty people from our city manager. Attacked by more powerful, fight back, smile. Attacked by less powerful, listen, think. Attacked by bees, run. My only suggestion is, the person that's sitting in that seat before, because of him taking the same action that number forty-five had, he's not sitting in that seat anymore. And it's going to be a fact. He's not going to treat us any kind of way and sit in that seat. And that's a fact. That's not, that's a promise. It's just not going to happen. All right? So if you're on that diocese, be professional. Let your life and your life be professional. But don't come with this pettiness the day after a meeting because somebody called you on your behavior. If you're wrong, say you're wrong, and admit you're wrong. Because he was wrong. There's a council up here. Now, he don't represent one person. He represent each and every one of you guys. And even though this has nothing to do with this at the forum the other night, the two council members that showed up that's sitting on this diocese is what we did, not what you all did, is what I did. And you can't get anything done with one vote. You need a body. Because you are only as strong as the weakest link up there. Thank you.
Mayor and city councilman, my name is Lucy Gomez, and I have been a citizen for sixty-three years here in Seaside, almost living in the same place for the past sixty-three years. So thank you for allowing me to be here. And Ms. Jones released to the media, she states that serving the city council is literally a volunteer job. Yet she complains that her stipend minus healthcare is a hundred and sixty-one dollars a month and puts an average of one hundred hours a month into the council members' duties. Why was she not, was she not aware that this is not a paying job when she ran for council member? So what are your expectations when you become mayor or when running for mayor? Thank you.
Hello, comments to open?
Lisa Antoni, I'm going to shift the conversation a little bit to some safety issues that I've seen recently. I want to thank the fire department for the ride-along. It was really informational. I encourage others in the community to consider saying hi. They also have their open house this week, ten to three. As being a neighbor, I thought I'd at least make that plug too, along with Miss Rucker's party. I saw two safety things recently. There was another biker that was hit at two eighteen in Del Monte. There was a car and bike collision, and thank God, it looked like the person was okay and not too injured. But I know there's been comments going on next door as well about just the speed and the overall safety of bikes and these new paths. And I know I've heard from many of the businesses on Del Monte and Fremont that they're concerned that they're going to see somebody killed at some point with how, you know, the traffic is and that we're not doing a lot of education and just the overall. So I just ask that the city really look at this and come up with more solutions to it. I really think, none of us really want, you know, a death in our community for that. As I've been walking around the community and speaking to people, I also request that there's a place, either on a website or an email, where the community could share things that are safety concerns or that could be repaired. I hear from a lot of people, oh, this is in my neighborhood at this corner, or this, or that. And I think it might be something that we could maybe streamline within the council or the city, you know, just to conduit from our website as another way to collect information and repairs that are needed from our city services. And then finally, I had spoken to the city clerk this today and was looking for an update on both investigations. I'm just curious to whether we've gotten a firm and we have a timeline and some of those things. I understood it was maybe going to be discussed at some point. I'm really concerned about some of the harassment concerns, certainly with Mayor Taylor background, and I just want to understand what's being addressed with that. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilman, everyone here. My name is Kenneth Murray, pastor of the Oshie Baptist Church, twelve hundred Amador, in Seaside, California. And I'm a Seaside resident by way of Pacific Grove. I just stand to say, in the midst of it all, we still need to encourage one another. There's some issues in our city, but we all have issues. KSBW is here, and they're airing it on tonight. But I want to make KSBW news know you got issues too. Just don't point out our issues, all right? We're a city led by a great mayor and city council that hopefully will continue to listen to the citizens of Seaside. All we want is what's best for Seaside. And as leaders, and I'm speaking from the pulpit to the door, that we have to watch what we do, watch what we say, one to another. But in the midst of it all, right is just right and wrong is just wrong. And so, not just from Donald Trump and what's going on there, but even for our local city government, right is just right. You serve the people, not yourself. And that's the same way as we are in the church. We serve the people and not ourselves. And we're just asking for the right thing to be done. And we don't want no shade. We don't want no rocks thrown, you know, because Bible teaches me that all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. And that he who is without sin, I dare you to cast first stone. But we just, we don't want to hear no more comments, underlying comments, about the right of people that have to come down for public comments. It should not be, there should be some tough skin in the midst, especially in election time. Because these are just things that come out. It's nothing personal. So we ought not take it personal. Amen. It's just, it's just, it's just, it's just what's happening during this time. And so I just want to encourage each other to, let's pray. The city needs to pray. You know, we heard good news about that closure on that killing a couple of years ago, you know? And some officers worked hard and diligently to solve that. Okay. Even a preacher might.
Thank you. Is there any more public comments? See, now I'll bring it back up. Councilwoman Jones, would you like to respond to some of the direct questions?
Okay, so one of the questions, sorry, I have a cough drop in my mouth. One of the questions was, do I support each council member having eight thousand dollars in their travel budget? Absolutely, because I have publicly said that I wish my colleagues would attend these. Well, they can't all attend these with me, but colleagues would attend these trainings and educational seminars and things like that with me. Because I think that we are all better served and we are all equally educated. So if that's something that we can put in the budget, I'm fully supportive of that. Someone said, what are my expectations when I entered office? I knew that this was a volunteer job, but I did not expect to have to go to a mandatory three-day training within two months of taking office, which costs twenty-three hundred dollars of childcare out of my own pocket. That's not something that I expected. So when I came back and a member of the school board told me that they had unsuccessfully tried to pass a childcare or family care reimbursement program at their school board and gave it to me and said, maybe your board will pass it. This council passed it unanimously. So I think the time to be upset about that policy would have been at that budget meeting. We'd be all set yes to that. And we expanded it to be family care, so that if you're taking care of an elder or grandma or something like that, you can have that reimbursed. Someone said, have I been fined? I have not been fined from the FPPC. I called the FPPC this morning. They have not even decided to open investigation yet. I've been in constant contact with the FPPC. I think someone asked if all my forms are turned in. Every single Form four sixty for city council and for my mayoral committee have been turned in. They're in the binder. I've had an ongoing dispute with the city clerk about whether some of these forms were misplaced or I don't know what happened, but they have all been resubmitted. And there was a letter accompanying them explaining the background situation. So all of that's turned into the FPPC. Someone asked where the childcare policy can be found. There's two separate policies. There's a policy for families attending council meetings or any other city business where they can have free childcare. And then there's the family care policy that the city council passed. Those are two completely separate things. It doesn't come out of the community's family care fund. That's not how that works. Someone asked if there was any, or someone mentioned that I signed a travel thing, but I didn't sign the accompanying ten pages that came with it. I asked our then-finance director if there was any documentation or anything other outside of receipts that I needed to sign. I was told there was none. I was notified by Councilmember Pacheco that there is a ten-page document that before you go on any educational trip, you fill out. And then when you come back, you fill out the rest as finance. I was told that by Councilmember Pacheco like maybe three weeks ago. And I asked finance, and I asked the city manager, and I asked other members of staff, and I was never given any type of document like that. And they will back up everything I'm saying. I went through the childcare or the family care policy, I believe, when I went to Texas with the city manager to go hire the police chief. Because I said, is this okay? Have I blown through policy? He said, oh, you're definitely going to blow through policy going on this Texas trip. So that was before I even, I believe that was before I really started serving heavily with the League of Cities Economic Development and Affordable Housing Committee. So I've gone on, I think, four or five up and down the state of California trips with the League of Cities in my role serving on that committee. Everything else has been approved by this council. If it was supposed to come before the council for out-of-state expenditures, that's something that every council member has a responsibility for. That's something I was not made aware of. But we all should have had that come up here then. We all should have said yes or no. I was the Disneyland trip. I went instead of the mayor because it was for a women's conference. I have an email from the mayor inviting me. I came back, gave a report, said, thank you so much for inviting me to go to this women's conference. Because he clearly felt that he should not be the one at the women's conference. I've given a report back to the council on every single educational trip or experience that I've had with the League of Cities or with the National League of Cities with the Women in Government Conference. I've always given a report back. I've always encouraged my colleagues to attend these with me. We all receive the same invitations. And I've also reported back on social media, so not just Facebook, but also here. So I feel like I've done everything that I can do as far as trying to make the community aware of what's going on. Clearly, some minority, vocal minority of the community has a problem with this. And I think that we're doing everything that we can to right this. But those are the facts, and I've been completely open about everything. And also, my husband doesn't know anybody's name really here. So I didn't, the first time I heard some of your names was right now. So he didn't text me anybody's names. I don't know how anybody would even be able to prove that. But that's my statement on everything. I also have a press release that went out. There's nothing else I can do at this point. Everything's turned in. Everything's accounted for. Oh, and someone asked, how did I get to the four hundred and ninety-dollar number? A resident of Seaside came to me, said, I have these concerns with these purchases. I didn't agree with that, but I said, okay, give me a number and I'll go down to City Hall with a check. That's exactly what I did. I listened to a resident, and I went to City Hall with a check. You can believe that or not, but the check was given. I said, if there's anything else that I will owe the city, I will pay that. That's where it is. So this audit, I'm in full support of. I don't know what the real difference is between a forensic audit or an audit. Whatever's going to make people happy, I will do and abide by. And I have made a commitment that if there is anything outside of policy, that I will pay that back. And I've already made good on that promise so far. And the city has not made me aware of anything that was outside of that policy at all so far. So I'm waiting to hear back from the audit with all of you. But this is a commitment I've made vocally and digitally online. There's nothing else I can do at this point. So I understand your frustration, but I think that this frustration is coming a little bit late. And we could have had this conversation before, all of us, not just the public, but the council could have had this conversation before.
Just to address one of the comments that was made by one of the members of the public. Again, as I indicated last meeting, I would ask people to just to sit back, relax. We are doing the investigations on the financial audit. We're doing it in two stages. The first, our current auditors are looking at doing an audit of all the council members up here, their travel and expenses since July first, twenty fifteen, to date. Second of all, once that's been completed, we're then going to do a forensic audit, which is a little bit more in-depth audit. And that will also be done for, again, each of the members, each of the council members up here, which includes the mayor as part of the, when I say council. So it will look at all five elected members up here and their expense accounts from July first, twenty fifteen, to date. And again, normally I would give this report at the end, but because it was asked this evening, there is the other investigation that's actually going on dealing with the alleged sexual harassment complaints. So we are doing that as we speak now, and we're hoping to have these done soon. I will tell you to do the financial audit and the forensic. I should shut up for a second. Okay. To complete the audit process, will take some time. It's, it's not just overnight type of thing, because we wish to be thorough in what we're doing on that. That will take some time, so you'll just be patient with us. Again, as I indicated to you, the members of the city council are not employees. As such, they do not have the same privileges as employees dealing with privacy rights. So as a result of that, everything that we're going to do up here in light of this, as well as the city's overall policy of transparency, will be available to the public when it's completed. So that's kind of an update as to where we stand this evening.
Okay, thank you. And I would thank the public. I will say one thing, yes, I did ask Ms. Jones to attend the women's conference, which was a day and a half was the conference, just to be clear. And also in regards to policy, every city council person, the mayor, city manager, city attorney is responsible for knowing what policies they have to abide by. Everybody has to. And those of you that are running for office know that part of your homework as a council person, a mayor, or a water board person, is that you're going to have to familiarize yourself with your policies regarding your, and your, and your conduct as an elected official. That's not anybody else's responsibility but your own. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to public agency communications. Are there any public agency communications at this time? I believe we have an event coming up. Anybody want to talk about that?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, Craig Leslie. My name is Johnny Subia. I'm with the Seaside Fire Department, as you can read on the back of the chair clearly. This Saturday, October 6th, from 10 to 3, we'll be hosting our annual open house. We'll be shutting down Broadway at Yosemite, sorry, we'll be shutting down Yosemite at Broadway. We'll be having the Seaside Police Association cook burgers and hamburg, burgers and hotdogs. And we're going to have free bounce houses and we're going to have free popcorn. PG&E will be there doing their safety demonstration with electricity. We'll have Walgreens doing their flu shots. We'll be doing a blood drive. There are still some available slots if you want to donate blood. We'll be doing a demonstration with sprinklers for home safety. We'll also be doing, we'll be using the jaws of life on a vehicle to show how we function in an emergency capacity and how to rescue people. So it's a family event. It's free. Come join us. Thank you.
I can tell you it's a lot of fun. They actually burn stuff up. And they actually put it out too, so it's pretty cool.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and public. I'm David Cassis, a thirty-three-year past business owner here in Seaside. Also a thirty-seven-year member of the Seaside Rotary Club. Coming up on the 12th of October is our twenty-fifth annual golf tournament fundraiser. And it's our, it's our major fundraiser for, for the year. And over the years, this being the twenty-fifth tournament, we have been putting back twenty to thirty thousand dollars into the community, children and elderly and whatever scholarships. I'd just like everybody to know about it and, and if there's something anybody can do, wanted to come to dinner at Bayonet Black Horse Golf courses on the 12th at 5:30. Please, please feel free to be there and thank you very much. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and respected city council members, I just want to come forward and speak to you guys a little bit about some cold case homicides that we have been working on vigorously this past week. I've had very little rest myself, working with the prevent detectives and our Seaside investigators. We're very pleased to have solved the homicide of the 2014 killing of Khalid Kennedy. We're working aggressively and I'd like the public to know on Andre Jacobs, he was also killed in July of 2014, as well as last year Fred Burtle was killed on Sonoma Avenue. These are all cases we're looking at. And the goal of the Seaside Police Department is to ensure safety in the public and not just those cases we're looking at. We're going to go back to the oldest cold case we currently have, which is the 1977 murder of Larry Rush at Highland Park off of Mingo. These are cases we are not going to stop on. And I want the public to know that they can ensure that we will keep them as safe as possible and we will never stop working on these cases. And we hope to see more positive news stories come from this city and this department on these cold case murders. Thank you.
All right then, if there's no other agency communications, we'll go into presentations. Okay, the first one is the city proclamation on domestic violence awareness month. Whereas although progress has been made toward breaking the cycle of violence and providing support to victims and their families, much work remains to be done. And whereas domestic violence programs in California provide essential life-giving services for victims and their children fleeing violence. And whereas there is a need to increase the public awareness and understanding of domestic violence and the needs of victims, domestic violence affects women, men, children of all racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in California and here in Seaside. And whereas all victims deserve access to culturally appropriate programs and services to increase their safety and improve their life situations. Approximately one in four of California women experience physical intimate partner violence in their lifetimes. Whereas the city of Seaside recognizes the vital role that all citizens play in preventing and one day ending domestic violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, the honorable Ralph Rubio, Mayor of the city of Seaside, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize October 2018 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Signed this day, Ralph Rubio, Mayor.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the YWCA in Monterey for their great work with domestic violence. And I'm sorry that they couldn't be here, but you'll see their footprints throughout our community. They have the purple ribbons up on our trees. They have them up on the lights down on Broadway. And they do this to raise awareness for everybody who has been impacted by domestic violence. They also have a fundraising event in October, so on October 26th at the Intercontinental Hotel, they are raising money by having a speaker talk about human trafficking and its implications. And I encourage everybody to support this board. Thank you, city council. Thank you, honorable mayor. And thank you for this proclamation for domestic violence awareness.
Let's see, the next one is for fire prevention week. He has been in the position so good that, that runs his crew. He's a good chief, isn't he? Real good chief. Well, do you want me to read it? Okay. The city of Seaside proclamation for fire prevention week, October 7th through 13th, 2018. Whereas the city of Seaside, California is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Seaside. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greater risk of fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires. And whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year. And whereas fire death rate for 1,000 home fires reported to U.S. fire departments was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980. And where Seaside residents should identify places in their homes where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas Seaside residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, on every level of the home. Whereas Seaside residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm. And when it responds, and when the sound responds by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas Seaside residents have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan, are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive from fires. And whereas Seaside's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Seaside residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas in 2018 Fire Prevention Week, theme, look, listen, learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that I, the honorable Ralph Rubio, Mayor of the city of Seaside, California, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 7th through 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout the city, I urge all the people of Seaside to be aware of the surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency. Respond to the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately and to support the many public safety campaigns and efforts. Well, Seaside's fire emergency services are in our prevention week 2018. Signed this day, Ralph Rubio, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to highlight a couple of lines that we're in here and how we could help you as residents. So it talks about Seaside residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. We're happy to come out to your home, do an inspection with you and make some suggestions that would make your home safer. Also working smoke alarms. The city has a program where you call us, we'll come out and install brand-new smoke alarms, ten-year tamper-proof, don't have to change the batteries. We're happy to do that as well. And then thirdly, the home fire escape plan. That's something they should practice with your family, have in place. So if we do, if you happen to have a fire in your home and we have to come to your home for that fire, you're out, you're safe, you can tell us. That will also protect the firefighters, so we aren't going in thinking that somebody's in your home and we can concentrate on putting the fire out and cutting down on the property damage. So thank you very much, but just call and we'd be happy to come out and have a conversation. Thank you.
Honorable Johnson, applause for our prior founders. Everyday heroes. Okay, the next proclamation is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Is there someone here from? Okay. Well, I have the qualification to read this because I am 53% Native American. Whereas the narrative that Christopher Columbus discovered America is both inaccurate and insensitive to indigenous peoples of the land that would later become known as the Americas. And whereas indigenous people are the forebears of this land and have been for time in memorial, the city of Seaside recognizes that Seaside is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region. And whereas that land is currently known as Monterey County, was originally inhabited by the Alonee, Kostanawans, and Nisland Nation. And whereas the city of Seaside has a responsibility to oppose racism, including systemic racism towards indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates poverty and income inequality while exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social mobility outcomes. The city of Seaside understands a conventional narrative founding of America to be one-sided and hopelessly incomplete history. Whereas Christopher Columbus did not discover America, or rather opened the effect of the systematic annihilation of indigenous peoples by European powers. And whereas Columbus's attorneys were the catalysts leading to the creation of Spanish missions across California. Missions that intended to strip the indigenous people of their culture, language, identity, and spiritual beliefs. And whereas the celebration of Columbus Day ignores the legacy of violence indigenous people suffered at the hands of European powers and can be understood to celebrate this genocide violence. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is declared as an international recognized holiday by the United States, by the United Nations. And now therefore be resolved that the city of Seaside encourages businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourage all to reflect upon the spirit of discovery, reverence, and authentic connection to a place which analyzes stewardship ethic for land which is we occupied for fleeting slices of time. Remembering that we do not inherit land from our ancestors as much as we borrow it from our children. Signed this day, Ralph Rubio, Mayor, October 4th, 2018. All right. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on the application process for short-term rentals.
Good evening. I'm Gloria Sterns in Community Development. And tonight we're going to talk about the process to apply for short-term rentals and the status as to where we are at this point. So I'm starting out with our website, because many people don't even know that we have a website on our city website. So all you have to do is go to the city of Seaside website and you should search for short-term rentals, boom, it pops a site. And I wrote the word example on it, because we're going to be adding two options to this particular website, one that will say, apply here, and one that will say, pay TOT here. And so that way we'll make it very easy for people to find those options. Right now what you can do is you can see that we have paper-based forms. So people who are doing short-term rentals right now and want to get licensed today. So before you go to bed tonight, you can go to the city website and you can print out some forms and you can start applying and then you can come into City Hall. Otherwise, we anticipate that our software will go live either tomorrow or on Monday. So I wish I could give you a specific date. I am pressing for tomorrow and the software developer's pressing for Monday, but I think I might win. So I encourage you just to keep visiting the website and that way you'll be able to see, just apply for the TOT. And then just a simple reminder to everybody, to make the process easier, when you do apply for your short-term rental license, there's a few things that it's handy to have ready ahead of time. So make sure that you have your Seaside business license. It's an important thing. So make sure that you have your Seaside business license, it's an important thing. If you have multiple short-term rentals, you only need one City of Seaside business license. So make sure that you just do that process. Also have proof that you were doing business prior to April 10, 2018. If you have all of those documents ready to go, the software will just have you upload your proof, and away you go. If you are doing it the paper way, you can just bring in your proof for the city, and the people at the development counter are happy to take copies of your documentation. As soon as we get our system live, either on Friday or on Monday, we'll start doing social media, we'll start doing it kind of lightly, but then you'll start noticing more intensity about it, once we know for sure that it's working without any hiccups, because we don't want to give you a system that hiccups. We want to give you a good system. And so we'll be putting it out on social media for everybody, and print media, and the more modules that we get in place, so this will be the application module, the next module that we'll put in place will be our TOT module, and we're happy to hear that we're going to have some more finance help in our department, so we'll be working with them to get that module up quickly soon after. But then we'll also have other modules, and I just want to run through some of the ones that we have. So license management is one of the features we get with our software, so that'll be the online license application management, they'll be able to tell you when you need to renew. It'll all be automated, since it's really a nice system that we're putting in place. We'll also have discovery, so some people are worried about enforcement, so how do we know if people are cheating? Well, the software automatically goes out and checks other sites, so it's not just Airbnb, list on Craigslist, list on VRVO, there's many others, and it checks over 50 different sites online so far and counting. So, we will be knowing who is running a short-term rental on any given night in the City of Seaside. We will also know on any given night who has a license to be doing business in the City of Seaside, and guess what? A report will be coming to us every single day of who is violating. So we're going to know about it, and that way it does a couple of things. First of all, it helps protect those of you who are coming in to get the licenses. There've been a lot of people who followed us along the way with this process, and we want to honor their wishes, and we want to make it so that way they are being able to do business legitimately, which was their concern all along. And then, second of all, the people who are not doing things legitimately will get the warning letters, and we'll start getting the notices, and we'll start turning it into an enforcement issue, making sure that they either start to get in compliance, or they stop doing what they're doing. We also have nuisance management. So one of the things that we were worried about with short-term rentals was preserving the character of our neighborhoods, because remember, we wanted to make sure that it was a balance between the economic opportunities, because some people actually use this to help pay for their mortgages, and then also maintaining the character of our neighborhoods. So to keep that balance, the economic opportunity as well as the character of the neighborhoods, we now have a 24-hour, 24/7 hotline. So if there are complaints, the neighbors are going to be notified. So first of all, when or if a short-term rental appears in your neighborhood, people within a hundred-foot radius are notified of this, they will have the phone number of the emergency contact person who's running the short-term rental, or responsible for the short-term rental. We'll also have nuisance management numbers out there, so that way everybody can call this number, so that way if somebody's not responding, they have a hotline to call. And we have to find the escalation procedures within this hotline, so that way we have what happens if the first person answers, if doesn't answer, what about the second contact, and so on. So we have all of these contacts in place to preserve the character of our neighborhood, and make sure that a response is happening. So I just wanted, in summary, to remind everybody to apply on Monday, I'm being conservative, saying Monday, I'm hopeful that it's tomorrow, but we're really excited to finally get our software in place for short-term rentals. It may have seemed like we've been quietly doing this, and we have been, just very quietly in the background, there's been a lot going on in our city, and we've been moving this forward. People have been coming in with their short-term rental applications, we've had 28 people do it, be it pieces of paper, but we're very excited to have it not be pieces of paper, because our development counter stays much more organized that way, so when it's all on the online system, it's just easier to take care of. So I welcome your question from the council, and I think it was an opportunity to talk about what we've been doing.
Any questions? Just a quick statement, and just one or two questions. Thank you for reporting, it was an excellent one, I think we're going in the right direction. I wanted to thank the city attorney for guiding us through the process, as well as yourself. I, along with Jason Campbell, went to a forum recently, and they were mostly talking about Carmella and PG Pacific Grove, and it seemed like our plan seems to be a lot simpler, a lot more organized, and a lot more effective. They were talking cost management, it was like $150,000 a year in Carmella, plus city attorney fees. Also, in our area, we're giving back to the community through the Board of Housing, for both Jason and Ms. Kayla, related to impacting that, as well as the Community for Parks, so I think we did a lot of good things in this measure. The council compromised to make this project happen, but we're not, i.e. like Washington DC, we can compromise and work together to achieve good results. So my only questions are, one, I want to make sure that if it's owner-occupied, the owner lives there, it's not equal tent, they can do that anytime as I understand it, is that a correct statement? Yes, yes, so they don't have to be, but if they're not owner-occupied, or they're non-hosted, whatever the right term is, then they have to follow the guidelines of equal tent? That's correct. Okay. And I'm really, just, can you talk a little bit about, and it's really important that those that are abiding by the law, like you mentioned, they need, it's great that they're doing that, so the enforcement issue is very valuable to those that are doing the right thing, so we want to enforce it as much as possible. If someone is not following the right rules after this is in place, and after you do the social media impact and news releases, and all those things that you're going to do, to make people aware, and they should be already pretty much out there a lot, are they going to get warning letters, or are we going to, and I'm not saying they should, I'm just saying are we going to instantaneously find them if they're not abiding by our rules? Well, we haven't talked about it, the reality of it is, if it's somebody that can come into compliance, can, that means they were operational for non-hosted prior to April 10th of this year, they need to come into compliance, we will give them a warning letter, okay? If it's somebody that's in a hosted one, we will give them a warning letter that, oh by the way, you're required to have a business license and be a short-term rental preventer as well, or license as well. If it's somebody that has a non-hosted, and it's come in after April 10th, there will be a warning letter that says "I shall cease and desist." If they don't abide by that, then the next thing will be, we will be enforcing. So, okay, so we're going to try hard to enforce it as much as we can, and probably the most are going to get 30 days notice to come into compliance, I would assume. Is that fair? If it's someone that is operational for non-hosted after April 10th, they need to do two things. They need to give us a letter immediately that they are going to cease and desist, and they need to refund any money that they've collected from anyone else, they may not be getting a 30-day notice. That's good. Okay? Just so you're aware of it. But the others, we will give appropriate notice to. Again, we don't, we want to educate people on what the process is here, and our job is to really make people come into conformance, or work with people to come into conformance, not make them, but work with them to come into conformance. But those that wish to look the other way and not participate, we will take fairly strong corrective action, quick work. And just last, a quick comment is just, again, thank you for making it so easily accessible online with the payment as well, as well as the registration, so there should be no question, and it should also be easier for the homeowner to take care of it, you know, in an effective way, so thank you so much for your hard work on that, as well as the city turning, that turned this thing to a very simple thing that everybody should understand, so much appreciated.
Yeah, but I'll turn that right back to you, too. It was under your guidance, and again, like you had said, council helped shape this, so thank you all as well. That made it best for the community.
Question? Thank you, this is looking great. I just to clarify, this is, the website sign-up is for both hosted and unhosted?
Yes.
Okay, that's going to be good. And I think as the attorney made clear, you cited if a short-term rental shows up on a block, you can look and see if it's properly permitted, but I believe no short-term rentals, non-hosted short-term rentals should be showing up, because they've already existed. They will have existed prior to April 10th, and so we will have no new non-hosted short-term rentals showing up unless and until we make more permits available, which might be in July, is that correct?
Well, that's correct, but having said that, in understanding what goes on in other communities, there are likely to be people that come in after April 10th and try and do non-hosted. We will give them immediate notification, we will give them a copy of our ordinance, to let them know what the date was, and if they do not comply immediately, we will take whatever action is needed necessary in order to gain immediate compliance.
Okay, thank you. My point was is, if they looked it up, they would find no permit for it, because they came after the April 10th deadline. Okay, thank you.
Just, I've seen in the paper promotional ads to do short-term rentals in Seaside. So just for, if you have not seen that, just be aware that there is a promotional team out there saying that they can do short-term rentals effective anytime they choose, so just for your awareness, if you are not always aware of that.
I might be shooting them an email soon.
Good, yeah, because there, there's some well-paid ads saying that they can do that. We probably should do that, and send them some kind of notification. And I would probably do something more than just email, I'd probably actually add something on the city stationery as well, if we can, because I want to document, if we have to go after anybody that does this, we want to have a paper trail for the court.
Next item is a presentation on the Campus Town specific plan. Mr. Obleman?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Excited to be here presenting this. As a matter of fact, I started working on this project my very first day here at the City of Seaside, a little bit more than two years ago, and we've come a very long way. This is a really cool plan, and I'm excited to show it to you. In your packet is the whole 50-plus slide presentation that we did on Tuesday night, and it takes an hour and a half, I'm not going to do that whole thing, but I do want to let everyone know that we have copies at Seaside Creates, multiple copies, and at seasidecampustown.com. Later on, tomorrow afternoon, by the end of the day tomorrow, we will have a screen check final draft of the plan, we're going through and cleaning up a few little typos and stuff, but we're really excited how this plan is ready, so. Just to familiarize everybody with where the Seaside Campus Town is, so this is Highway 1 and Light Fighter, this is Light Fighter Road, this is Malmedy, Giggling, all the way along here, Seventh Avenue, and Colonel Durham. And of course, when you build a specific plan, you have to make sure it's in compliance with all of your other planning documents, and we're kind of in this interesting phase where we have a general plan from 2004, and we're working on our 2040 general plan, which is the major reset of the general plan right now, so we had to make sure that we were compliant and under either circumstance. And also with Fort River Base reuse plan, and with regional urban design guidelines that were implemented in 2016. This is just to give you an idea of the redways and what's going on around, it's not super exciting or important. We, last year, just about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, we had a Leet Kwan design shred, we had over 100 people from the community come to Soper Field and help us design this specific plan. In addition to the shred that we held at Soper Field, we also had a student group, thanks to Dan. Is Dan still here? Oh, there he is. We were able to get some feedback from university students, about 50 university students that we, that actually helped to inform this plan in a really important way. So, we had some goals that we set out, and these are them, but they are that the development would be seamlessly connected, both with the campus, with the adjacent neighborhoods, and throughout the internal circulation of the development. That the development would be focused on an urban village. We ended up actually contemplating two urban villages within this development, and that's because it's a really long, skinny development, and the way people work is they'll walk about a quarter of a mile and not much farther, and it made sense to have two of those urban centers within the development. We want to make sure there's a variety of open space, and there is. We wanted to make sure that the streetscapes, meaning the sides of roads as well as the streets themselves, were pedestrian-oriented, we want to keep the speeds of automobiles throughout the development under 25 miles an hour, so that no matter what's going on, it's safe for pedestrians. We wanted to expand retail and employment opportunities, and you'll see in a minute that we have both those retail opportunities, as well as some places for people to work within the development. We wanted to have diverse housing, so there's a number of housing types in this, they range from some bigger homes to some attached townhome products to apartment buildings. We want it to be sustainable, environmentally, socially, and economically, and we wanted to focus on active, healthy lifestyles and encourage people to be active. And you remember our last City Council meeting, we were talking about active transportation? There's a lot of thought in active transportation throughout this plan. We also have some policies. The complete streets is an idea that a street, that all of our streets should be streets that accommodate all modes of transportation, so we want to make sure that there's a place for cyclists, that there's a place for pedestrians, that there's a place for people that are riding on scooters, there's a place for people that ride buses, and that there's a place for people that are driving their cars. We wanted to utilize form-based development standards, and the reason for that is we wanted there to be some differentiation among the products and the different phases of the development, and we wanted the developer to be able to use the best practices available at the time that things actually hit the ground. And, you know, it's a big development, it's probably going to take between five and 10 years to get completely built out, so we wanted to ensure that we were doing things right, and the form-based kind allows us to do that, while also providing some flexibility within the development. We want to make sure that there are vertically, oh, sorry, I forgot, that there were at least 235 intersections per mile, and were, per square mile, and we're a little bit above that. We want to make sure that there were vertically mixed uses throughout some of the buildings in the development, meaning that there may be retail, office, residential, maybe even some non-retail, but active uses, that all within, you know, the context of one building. We wanted to see a variety of building types, and again, you know, we're seeing everything from a five-story building in this plan down to a row house, so a lot of different types of buildings. We wanted to minimize the extended surface parking lots and garage doors, and this plan has something really interesting in it, is we didn't include a parking standard. And the reason we didn't include a parking standard is, no matter what anyone tells you, what's in the International Transportation Engineer's book, it's not the right amount of parking in this context, the parking standards that cities adopt are not the right amount of parking in this context. I don't know what it is, and anybody that tells you they know what it is is probably wrong. The only people that are really going to know are the people that are willing to make those investments in this property, that are going to be the retail tenants, that are going to be purchasing homes, or purchasing condominiums, or living in apartments. The market should drive that parking decision. So, and the other, the other thing that's really important is, because Giggling and Colonel Durham are the bounds of the existing development, we realized that that was too far from Colonel Durham, it's about a little bit under a half-mile from Colonel Durham to Giggling. And that's too far for somebody to walk, so we wanted to make sure that there was an additional street and an additional connection through the middle of the development. So, just so you see the region, I want to point out that we started thinking that right here, and right here would be our urban centers. In fact, if you look at the plan that Urban Design Alliance planned before, that's where they think their urban centers were going to be. But, again, when we met with, when we had one of Dan's students set up a shred on campus, we found out that the students didn't think that was where the urban center that served the campus would be, they wanted it to be here, and we made that change. And just a little closer view. So, here's kind of the maximum, what the development could be at its maximum, we may not get to the maximum in every category, but 185 housing units, 250 hotel rooms, 75-bed, or 75-bed hostel, retail dining and entertainment space of about 150,000 square feet, and then, and this is... And then, and this is where, when we were talking earlier about places, I pressed the wrong button. I'm sorry. Um, places to work. We also are including, sorry, I thought that, some industrial flex space, fifty thousand square feet. And that fifty thousand square feet, um, is going to be, you know, what we call flexible industrial space, and it could be, uh, lab for an electronics company. It could be a, a marine lab. It could be a wet lab. Um, it could be just a maker space. And, um, even, I was in Portland, Maine, of all places earlier this summer, and I saw an industrial flex space that had seven breweries, a distillery, and a wood burning pizza kitchen in it. And on Wednesday afternoon at, at three P M., there were probably a hundred and fifty people there. So, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of different ways that that space can be used, but the most important thing is it provides jobs and it provides all of the brilliant creative people that live in this region and tend to work in the region to our north, a place to create businesses and to grow our local economy. So this is the last slide I'm going to show you. This is our master plan. I'm just going to kind of quickly show you a few things on it. The first bays will be from here till about right here. Um, and that's, uh, really because this parcel of land is owned by the successor agency and the rest is owned by, or sorry, this parcel of land is owned by the city and the rest of the land is owned by the successor agency, and that's how we divvied up the purchase and sale agreement. There'll probably be some, you kind of sub, sub-phases within those phases. Um, we're, we're going to have, um, because there's a development that we're working on as well that, uh, right here called Main Gate, that will have a, an additional kind of urban center. Um, we wanted to provide a strong connection between that development and this development. And so here, there's four little pad restaurants and a hotel, and the idea here is to sort of, uh, create a connection between these, these two spaces. Um, there's a road down the middle. The whole first bay's housing, except for the apartments, is going to be, uh, row house, townhouse type product. And then this is the urban center in Phase One, and what we expect to see there is, is, uh, a lot of food and beverage type uses and probably even a small, high-end grocery or, or a public market type concept within that. And then, you know, along this edge, we got some bigger, nice houses. The developers found us that they're thinking something like brownstones um, in that space because there'll be, uh, small lots with a big house on it. Um, there'll be a lot of townhouses and row houses throughout here, a lot of single families in this area, some single families out here on the edge, and all mixed in with row houses and townhouses, um, all through the residential areas. These three little buildings here plus, uh, potentially two buildings right here are that industrial flex space. And then this is the campus-focused, uh, urban center. And there, what we're hoping to see is, uh, you know, three, four, five-story structures, including some office space, some co-working space, some retail, it's kind of campus-focused kind of retail, and student apart, or student housing units, uh, as well as the seventy-five bed hostels. We're, uh, hoping that ends up in this building right here. Um, and believe it or not, we've already received some substantial interest in those buildings from a company, a Chinese company that has a little tiny headquarters in San Jose, and they don't like it, and they heard about this and are very interested in it. Um, we've also, uh, heard from, uh, WeWork and Next Space, and they're interested in being in there. So we, we're already seeing some, some excitement about this, even, even though it's not there, and that part of it's, you know, five, five to seven years down the road. Uh, so again, I got the other, you know, forty or so slides. Very happy to ask questions, but, um, in the interest of time, I, I'm available at Seaside Creates most of the time. Everyone here, everyone listening on T V, everyone in City Council, please give me a call and come in and sit down, and we'll, we'll go over all of the details as much, in as much detail as you like.
Thank you. Very well done.
Mr. Taylor?
Just two things, uh, and you know I'm going to pick you, pick on you. When I went to the presentation on, uh, Tuesday night, I think you guys, the consultant yourself did a wonderful job. Great community turnout, a lot of interest, a lot of, uh, support. I personally, just hearing an hour and a half presentation, I thought there was a lot of imagination, a lot of creativity, a lot of looking at doing things, not necessarily in the normal way, but in a creative way, in a, in a, in a different generation as far as bicycling, walking, connectivity. I think it was all very, very good. But one of the questions, and I just want to put it up right now, is, I think when the first question was about water, where are you going to get the water from? I know you're going to get the water, but Mr. Bakewell, this is like a yes or no, I understand that he cannot build anything without water, and there's a concern that he doesn't understand that. But he understands totally he cannot build without water. Is that true, David?
Absolutely. Nobody buys a house that doesn't have water.
Right, and he, but that was a point made the other day, that how you can do it, you will find us water. There's no doubt in that. But he understands that he has to have water to move forward. The other thing, uh, on this project, I think Mr. Bakewell is a person that understands community in the development. Uh, there's a small baseball field and, and a, and a small soccer field. It's not the size that I would suggest, but at least there's something there for the, because there's like fourteen hundred how, homes, which is probably about three thousand, four thousand people. I think that's a necessity. But you know that I want to constantly remind you that either the consultant didn't have any kids, never seen any kids, or don't want any kids, because when you have an athletic field, you need bathrooms, and there is no concept of that currently. And, and, you know, doing things half-baked and not totally correct is something that I'm going to, uh, harp on. There's other areas that we'll harp on as we see the, uh, design later on. But we have to take care of our kids because this is going to be a future planning, and a lot of new families are becoming in this area. But there is a lot of imagination, so please, uh, share that with the consultant or who we need to, that we need to use common sense and we need to do things right, as the way you said. If you don't have bathrooms to take care of the kids, this house will not have a bathroom in your house. It just doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
Absolutely, and I spoke with Mr. Bakewell after I talked to you on Tuesday night, and he agrees and is planning on, at least on, on the, oh dang it, wrong button again, sorry.
No, at least on both of them.
On this part, on this part here, that there would be a bathroom. Um, this one maybe not, and the reason is it's a half a block from here where there'll be a public bathroom.
And you have kids, so you think about that.
Uh, yeah, of, of course, absolutely.
I don't think that's a common sense approach, but we'll talk about that later.
Mr. Calm?
Thank you. It's looking, it's exciting. Looking good. Uh, so you said generally the first phase is going to be over to the left, the, roughly twenty-six acres or something like that.
Right, and we still need a little time to knock down some buildings, as everyone's aware.
And then, and there's a hotel in that first phase?
There, there is.
Is that scheduled to, uh, I mean, I might not have gotten to those details yet, but is that one of the first things, who tends to build?
Well, he's, he's still negotiating with several people about who will be the, the owner and proprietor of the hotel. Um, and I don't think he settled on anyone, so I don't want to say what, what that schedule's going to be at this time.
But anything that can generate revenue for the city, obviously, is, is very important to the city, and it'll be one of the first things that's built.
And I'm, I'm saying this because right now our hotel market is very, very hot, and there are a limited number of places in the Monterey Bay area where you can actually build a new hotel. Um, hopefully in a few weeks, this will be one of those. And, um, in that, you know, in that case, though, there, you know, just, I can think of, I think, think of seven people right now that are serious, competent developers of hotels like that that have contacted us, and then Mr. Bakewell has been in contact. So I'm, I'm not particularly worried about the hotel taking a long time.
And either is he, so, so maybe we could, if we could put it into the agreements over the, the hotel is built at a certain point before he moves forward with more housing or something like that.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to the development agreement in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, very well done. Nice plan. Uh, you know, been involved with this as long as you have, and look forward to the final project. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a consent calendar, which consists of approval policy checks in honor of one million six hundred forty-two thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. The conservative traffic advisory committee recommendations. See you approve fee waiver reclos from Seaside High School for costs associated with annual homecoming parade. The adopted resolution declaring a shelter crisis pursuant to S B eight-five-zero, chapter forty-eight statute two, statute of two eighteen employment code eight-six-nine-eight point two for eligibility for homeless emergency and program funding for the Westona Seaport. Uh, A, approval for community-based organizations and memorandum of understanding fiscal year two thousand and eighteen through two twenty, two thousand and twenty California violence intervention and prevention grant. Anybody like to pull anything for further consideration? Anybody in the public? I would just like to make a note about I D, and that is that, um, in my role on the leadership council for the homeless coalition, along with, uh, council member Pacheco, we're very involved in this, uh, this heat program, and I look forward to, uh, council member Pacheco continuing that, uh, role after I leave. And, uh, he's, he's very well versed in it, and, uh, hoping that he continues and so forth.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so, uh, entertain a motion.
We have to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is a business item. Adopted resolution awarding construction contract to, to Vinland Construction Incorporated for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for construction of the fourth project.
To the mayor?
Yes.
Um, there's a young lady that I guess is from Seaside High. I'm not sure what the concern is, but I don't know if you want to recognize her for, for.
Oh, for the homecoming?
Yes.
Yes, take him on.
Hi, I'm Monique Jones. I'm the dance instructor at Seaside High School. And I would like to invite everybody to our homecoming parade. It's three fifteen on October twenty-sixth. Can't hear you. Three fifteen on October twenty-sixth, and we're going to be marching, starting from our school and down Broadway. No. Free Wad, down Free Wad, and then we're going to come back up down Wad. No to Lena.
Okay, so it's three fifteen on October.
On our Friday. And then we're also going to be having our big game, and we just got our new field, so we're really excited to play. And I hope that everybody here can.
Great, we'll do our best. Thank you. Thank you, councilmember, for pointing that. Okay. So, uh, we're on item nine A, uh, staff report.
Hi, honorable mayor and city council members. This item is for constructing improvements at the corner of Canyon Del Ray and, uh, Del Monte Boulevard. So what happened is, uh, some project proponents came forward, namely the N I C, it used to be the N I P C, and said, "We'd like to improve this corner of Seaside as it is sort of a gateway." And they had proposed putting in pretty much landscaping and a small stone wall with, um, some words that say "Seaside" on it. And then later, uh, the city of Seaside had a competition where we said, "Well, let's look for what that, um, sign should look like." And the winning sign, um, was actually somewhat a little bit different. It looks like this. It's made out of metal, and it has a seahorse incorporated into it. And the, the winning, um, um, person was, uh, I don't know how to say the name, Vinland Construction. And they offered to construct all the improvements, including all the landscaping, little path, um, and the, the sign for fifty thousand dollars. And that forty thousand dollars comes from the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the city council, uh, delegated to the Parks and Rights Commission for, um, a, a ward. And then another ten thousand dollars coming from another town, the city of Seaside. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Not a question, but I just wanted to point out that, uh, thank you for your work. Thank you for the report. The neighborhood, N I P or N I C, uh, neighborhood improvement program, been working on this for two years. And, uh, I think the leadership of the city manager, giving us the project some additional money, I think this is going to be an amazing way, entryway to the city. So I think a lot of kudos and credit, uh, of the leadership of the N I P and staff, Mr. Little, uh, for, uh, making that happen, as well as the guidance and the openness to do something different in Seaside that hasn't been done as it relates to a positive entryway. So we, the residents should be very proud of this, and thank you for all your hard work. I think it's a really positive entryway to the city of Seaside. Thank you.
So to be clear, the, the sign, the sign is, has changed to, uh, to what's on the bottom line for this?
Uh, to that. It's actually, uh, this word "seaside" in metal, painted metal, and then there's a metal seahorse. And we're very fortunate in that the person that won the competition is also constructing the sign.
Okay, and that is very fortunate, just because I'm, I'm looking at these plans here, and it shows a different sign down on the bottom, and I just want to clarify.
Right, right, right. So in the contract documents, we've, uh, eliminated the rock wall sign. I, I didn't want to give you the, uh, we scratched out version in the contract documents.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure of what we're approving tonight, but thanks for the clarification. It's looking great.
As a matter of form, um, uh, as a porters, and it's a good design, and I think it's going to be really good for the city to have that as a, uh, deep gateway. Uh, but as a matter of form, uh, could we include the contractor information? You know, whether it's just some information of who the contractor is, you know, what kind of projects they've done, just kind of like an contractor resume, so we know what we're, we're given. Not necessarily on this one, but in the future as we do these.
Absolutely.
So that we have an understanding of, uh, you know, qualifications and whatnot of the contractor.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions from the council? Or from the public? Any comment from the public?
Good evening, Lisa Sani. I've spoken at the park commission about this. I'm concerned that we're spending fifty thousand dollars on property that's not really a park. Um, and, you know, our parks are really in dismal repair, some of them, and certainly could have used the fifty thousand uh, for different parks, uh, within our area. I, I like the idea of the signage. I'm just really concerned that, again, we're pulling from our park. And I don't think that the land is even, you know, completely, um, you know, can be dedicated for parks or things like that. So I also have concerns, as I just shared, even with the biking. But I've been talking to the business owners in that area, and it's a really, uh, tight and already highly trafficked area. Can't even say that, trafficked area. And I'm concerned that, you know, a sign like this, it's with the idea that I assume people are going to take pictures, and it's going to be a marker and things like that. So I've shared these concerns. I understand it's probably going on, but I just wanted it to be on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on this? See, and then I bring it back for objection.
That's right. If, uh, move it to council, um, approve the contract, awarding the contract.
Second. The motion is second to approve the resolution awarding the contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is an adoption of a resolution approving agreement with everyone's harvest to manage the Seaside Certified Partners Market year-round on the six hundred block of Broadway Avenue, and to approve street closures for this re-encouraging event. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Steph has a very brief presentation on expanding, uh, what was a, a trial, uh, program.
Thank you, Steph has a very brief presentation on expanding what was a trial program to do year-round.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Sharon Maxell, I'm the administrative analyst for the City of Seaside, and I'm based out of the Seaside Creates Office at six fifty-six Broadway. Earlier this year, the City of Seaside did debut the Seaside Certified Farmers Market as part of the Broadway Bash celebration, celebrating the reopening of the new and improved Broadway after a year of infrastructure upgrades. Last month, following a steady growth of interest activity, your council extended the street closures to extend the Farmers, the Certified Farmers Market season. And tonight, it is my pleasure and honor to present a proposal to the city council to continue to provide this healthy and positive community activity to the City of Seaside by continuing our partnership with Everyone's Harvest Market Managers in making the Seaside Certified Farmers Market a year-round activity. Just a little bit about Everyone's Harvest. Currently, they are providing us with seven sustainable farmers that grow what they sell. That includes grapes, stone fruits, vegetables from the Salinas Valley, fresh flowers, you see me walking around with fresh flowers a lot on Saturdays, and local vegetables and berries. There's also been five lunch vendors, live music, and influx of weekend shoppers to the downtown area. But even more importantly, it provides a location for families facing diet-related health issues to use the prescriptions that are issued by the Seaside Family Health Center and the Fresh RX program. Everyone's Harvest Market Match Program also doubles the spending power of the families using CalFresh SNAP benefits to buy produce at our market. And a little bit of explaining for how much that really impacts the community. As of the thirty-first of August, the Seaside Certified Farmers Market has provided nearly three thousand dollars in special produce services. It includes EBT, WIC, Market Match vouchers in the Fresh RX program. And this is not counting the regular cash sales. So assuming there's six carrots in a pound, and there's a pound of carrots in a dollar, that two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars that were in extra benefits was equivalent to sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-two carrots. That's a lot of carrots. So to go all year, how is this funded? We do have a budget item already, oh, going the other way. We do have a budget item already, and we're planning to revive the market in the spring. So we do have some funds already budgeted. But by going year-round, our momentum will continue. As more vendors participate, the vendors' fees paid are credits to the contract and also bring the cost down to the city. The fresh produce and benefits to our attendees will also expand. An additional expense to the city is the ADA compliant restroom and the hand wash station, but this cost can also be shared with other weekend events that happen on Broadway. And as you know, we do have a lot of events on Broadway. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Reed Norris, the executive director of Everyone's Harvest, to say a few words about the Certified Farmers Market. And we will both be happy to answer your question. Staff does recommend the council approve the extension of the Certified Farmers Market to a year-round event. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reed Norris. I'm proud to be here, I'm executive director of Everyone's Harvest. With Seaside, we run, we run six farmers markets. So this is our newest one, and it's a partnership we're so excited about because our mission is to expand access to the healthy produce grown in our area through farmers markets and community food programs. And the programs are what make us a unique organization, different from other farmers markets. Fresh RX, which Sharon mentioned, is a partnership with physicians, including a physician in Seaside Family Health Center. She helped us launch a pilot program with, I think, ten families. And this year, we have more than a hundred and twenty families participate. Thousands of people visit our markets every week, doubling the SNAP benefits. That's another program that we're trying to get the word out about because it makes us such a unique organization. And the doctor at Seaside gave us a great, I think, endorsement when she said, you know, "I identify children to participate in the Fresh RX program because they're dealing with obesity or early childhood nutrition issues. But what I see happen is the whole family gets healthier because they go, they redeem their prescription at the market, and they cook meals together as a family." So, yeah, we're really thrilled to partner with her, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have from the market.
Okay, thank you for being here. Any questions?
Just one thought. One, I want to thank both of you, Mr. Scale, for doing such a hard job, making this happen as well as yourself. I think it's a great addition to the city. I think there's a lot of community activity and meeting new neighbors, that's real positive. The only thing that I heard today, actually, from the resident, who greatly commended your efforts to make it as happen, they would like to see, and it makes sense, more dual-language promotion. So that way, they can, people of all cultures, or the Spanish culture, be more person. So that was the only, that was the only criticism that person had. And everything I've seen, been out there numerous times, it's real positive. And the idea of getting more vendors, obviously, is even better. So thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you for doing this, and there's some great ideas for getting more people to eat more healthy foods. It's good, it's fantastic. I've only, I've been, heard from numerous people, very positive things, that they come down every Saturday religiously, and they, they're absolutely, wholeheartedly behind expanding this. And just the one criticism on this, 'cause I got, is, was better marketing. They would like, they would like to be, see it advertised even more. I'm not sure who's ultimately responsible for that, but if, you know, any way we can get the word out any better, it would be greatly appreciated. It's a great, so far, it's considered a great success. Thanks.
And it is a really good addition to the City of Seaside. I'm not a real big vegetable guy, but the stone fruits that you can get at the Farmers Market are better than you can get at any, you know, regular market. They're easier to ripe, and they're very delicious. So that's what I go do, I, I cruise to the stone fruit, and really give my best. Okay, let's go ahead and open this to the public. Is there any public comment?
Lisa Sani, I too have enjoyed going down there and being able to, you know, see neighbors and things like that. I had a couple of things. I think the Farmers Market was, with the idea of bringing people down to Broadway after the closure. And I'm wondering if you've done anything with the businesses, even just a straw poll or a Survey Monkey survey or something about whether their business has increased on Saturdays having people down there. So just something, maybe that's something we can do this next phase. Also, the no parking signs. I have had responses from the businesses down there saying they would really like to see the no parking, not go up on Thursday or Friday, but go up on Saturday beforehand because, obviously, you know, people won't shop as much. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'd like to address the question that she has asked. The MPDS thrift shop has expanded their business exponentially since the Farmers Market has, has opened. And the oven has also said that their business has increased dramatically since the Farmers Market. And even, even though they do sell sometimes pizza at the Farmers Market, his business has also improved. So, yeah, they're, they're very happy. And we've also had some of the, some of the businesses have actually asked, could it run later in the day? So that the business could increase later in the day. So we'll think about that one.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the end of a resolution approving an agreement with Everyone's Market, Everyone's Harvest, to manage the Seaside Certified Farmers Market.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other discussion on the second? See, and all those in favor? Opposed? Most in carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is an adoption of a resolution approving the fire protection of the City of Del Ray Oaks in Seaside for the period of July one, two thousand nineteen, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-two.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this is a three-year extension of a contract that we've had, or we've served the City of Del Ray Oaks since two thousand and three. And over that time, there's been a number of significant changes to it. From when I first arrived here, it was a pay-per-call basis. And we had some issues where we were responding, and then we would get returned by the officer that responded to the scene. Wasn't effective for us, it wasn't good patient care. So Del Ray Oaks and Seaside sat down, and we came to the conclusion that let's have a fixed rate for the contract. So just in essence, from two thousand and eight, the contract pay-per-call was about ninety thousand dollars in income. Fast forward to our last three years of contract, it was a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And this contract puts a kind of a cost of living increase in, that's based on a firefighter's increase in their salary. So the first two years, we, we know what that's gonna be. The third year, we'll know once that contract is negotiated. So no essential changes to the contract. They seem very happy with our service. It just adds that cost of living increase to it.
Very good. Any questions for the chief? Okay. Well, it's good for the city that we're, you know, capturing the contract increases and the cost of living increases to keep up pace with our output. Is there any public comment I'm saying? All right, well, it's good that we're working with our neighbors. All right, then, there's no other questions or comments? We can't motion?
Move to adopt the resolution approving the fire protection agreement between the City of Del Ray Oaks and the City of Seaside.
Second.
The motion is second to adopt a resolution approving fire protection. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, well, move on to city manager.
Reporting.
City attorney?
Just a quick comment. A quick comment, I know this has been in the paper, but I just need to officially report it that it's the city did enter into an agreement, stipulated judgment, with Reverend Gaskins. And as you may be aware, the stipulation provides that if we need the property prior to December first, he will leave no later than December first. If not, he will remain there until January first. And the court has retained jurisdiction until January fifteen in the event he has not vacated the property by January first. And the city did not have to pay any, any expenses or anything to get through this process.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pacheco?
I attended the police chief's school resource information meeting at Sober. I want to thank Assistant Chief Wardes for being there as well. Gave the opportunity for residents to share their ideas and speak about it. And I was also really grateful, like, I didn't have the opportunity to go, but they also went to Seaside High School and talked to students at Seaside High School related to their information and needs, and see if it works for them as well. So I think down the road, they're gonna come back with a report. So, but I'm very grateful for the community input on that project. I attended the parking day on Broadway Avenue in Cornation with the Farmers Market. I thought staff did a great job, and again, we can bring people together to get a showcase Broadway. I think it betters all of us. I attended the homeless coalition meeting in Salinas. You know, I personally want to thank Mayor Rubio. I think that the mayor's group has kind of woken up some people as far as how to do, what we need to do to help the homeless. There's been a new revived importance and value on doing something rather than talking about something. And I think the mayor's group, especially Mayor Rubio, should take a lot of credit for that. And hopefully, down the road, or when it's your turn, you could talk a little bit more about some good, potentially good news. So I'm gonna leave that to you, 'cause you were impetus of positive things on related to that. And just lastly, I already mentioned this, but I attended the campus town. And again, just wanted to thank Kirk and staff for all their hard work in making that happen and making sure that we look at things in a positive way to service all the community residents in our area. Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, mayor. I did attend a waste management district meeting right after our last meeting. And really, probably the most important thing that was developed there that just came out is an application called What Goes Where. And anyone can go to their website and download this application. And it, and if you have a question about where to put pretty much any piece of garbage or recycling, it'll, you know, put it in plastic bottles, put it in bottle cast, put it in a styrofoam. It will tell you, you know, depending on the code, which bin to put it in, how to dispose it. Very handy application. That's all I have. Thanks.
Very good. Okay, so I did attend the four or five authority habitat management program workshop that was requested by some of the members of the board. We had a, not a really good showing, especially considering that folks that asked for it didn't show up. So that just means that we're gonna have more discussion at the board level. They should have been at the workshop to find out all the, all the questions and answers. Now we're gonna have to make sausage at the board, at the board level. So I then attended the Monterey One Water meeting. Got update status on, on the, on the pure water, pure Monterey water project. Then had a nice meeting with Colonel Ford, a new Garrison commander, with the city manager to talk about the future opportunities for the City of Seaside and the Presidio in regards to the way we interact out in the former four-door, including public safety, what the rules are. I know that the Garrison chief out there is always in contact with Seaside PD. And you guys have really good, in the course there, in terms of what the procedures are. But there's always room for improvement. I want to talk about future water on the, on the former four-door and how we can support the Garrison's mission here on, on this one. Attended the TMC meeting on Wednesday, and then the homeless coalition leadership council. There's quite a few things going on there. There's twelve point five million dollars coming to Monterey County for the state. And we just passed an action on the consent calendar that declares a crisis in Seaside in regards to the homeless. And by doing that, we make ourselves available to tap into that twelve point five million for the county. Now, the county of Monterey and Salinas have been working very diligently on a warm-up shelter as they've been doing with the Chinatown area. And the hope is that with the leadership council now having several mayors on it, that to be more of a regional responsibility acknowledgement in terms of the homeless situation. And what that means is, how are we as cities gonna work together to locate and find places to put up these structures? Because this money isn't for, you know, for the banding approach to the homeless situation. It's to find and build structures to accommodate the homeless. So that's gonna be a very interesting conversation here on the business line. But I think it's one that's needed, and if Seaside needs to take the leadership, then so be it. And I'm looking to council member Pacheco to carry the torch for me, so to speak, in that, in that regard. I know the mayors will be there as well, South County, Salinas, and municipal mayors to, for that, that push. It's about time. And the whole concept of the regional approach does need the policymakers involved. Up to this time, the leadership council was made up of just the service providers. So they were very happy to just keep the money coming the way... So they were very happy to just keep the money coming the way it was coming, because it benefited their programs, which benefit the homeless, but don't really, I don't think, in my, in my opinion, get us to a solution to the root problem, which is roof silverheads. So look forward to the next meeting. We also decided to meet more regularly, instead of bi-monthly, we're gonna meet on a more compressed schedule so that we can get this, this spark out. So look forward to doing that, and to assistance from Councilmember Pacheco. Then attended the forum meeting, where we did finally pass our consistency determination on our zoning codes, so that we can move, we have some of our projects that were bound up by that. And hopefully, we don't have any issues with that. I attended, oh, and I came to City Hall and signed all the documents on the bonds. So those are going to the market, and that's a good thing. Attended the dedication of the Cal Land Pipeline in Civil Grove. Let's see, of the Water Master, attended that meeting, we approved some budget items. And then attended the forum executive committee meeting, and that was it for this couple of weeks. So with that, any other comments? All right then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for being here.